Welcome to the April 29, 2019 Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vaughn.
Here.
Laude.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication at this time.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our FOIA's. Dr. Beavis?
Yes, we have FOIA's from Connolly, McMillan, Deloitte, and Maine, and those are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and that consists of approval of summer painting projects bid, approval of summer carpet replacement bid, approval of weight room flooring replacement bid, approval of upstairs theater rehearsal space renovation bid, approval of minutes from April 8, 2019, closed session minutes, and April 8, 2019, regular meeting minutes, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointments to staff exempt, certified support staff, safety and operations, and change in status correction. Yes, and there is an addendum as well, and the addendum personnel consists of appointment to staff exempt and certified as well as safety. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Okay, so now we are at item number five, which is a recognition of retiring board members. And I have prepared a statement that I'd like to read on behalf of the board. What makes a school board effective? An effective school board plays an important role in keeping our school on track and setting policies that affect students and our community. The school board articulates the vision and goals for the district and holds the district accountable for results. The members make up the school board. One school board member cannot do the job alone. This is a collective effort. Mark Metz and Jonathan Baum have effectively offered their unique skills to the school board for several years. As members of the school board, they have, along with other members, articulated the vision, set the goals for the district, adopted policies that give the district direction to set priorities and achieve its goals, evaluated the superintendent, adopted and overseen the annual budget. And utilizing an equity lens, the school board has been focused on creating a district that is culturally responsive and intentional about addressing all disparities and identifying and eliminating the barriers to more equitable outcomes. On behalf of the ETS community, I want to express my deep appreciation for your efforts and your service on the ETS Board of Education. Mark, you have served for 10 years and served as board president. Jonathan, you have served for eight years and served on the D-65 school board before coming to the 202 board. You both have been elected to participate on the board by our community multiple times and have been a part of some significant changes that will impact our culture and our entire community for many years to come. While we, as a board, haven't always agreed, you have been generous in sharing your perspective towards contributing to a board balanced in its governing governance approach that reflects our vision and supports our goals. We are all tremendously grateful to have had such committed school board members, especially through such a critical time in our district. You have been courageous, inspiring, and you represented your communities well. As you depart, I want to express my appreciation to you for your passion and for your commitment to education at ETS. You love our school, our students, our families, and our communities. You have demonstrated an all-in type of commitment in every regard. I have been honored to serve with you on behalf of the Evanston Township High School. And remember, it's always a great day to be a Wild Kid. All right. So the next item.
Go ahead.
It won't surprise anyone that I have a few things I'd like to say. So when I told my friend and fellow former District 65 board member Hecky Powell that I wasn't running for another term this year, he responded, "So, you finally got yourself a decent psychiatrist?" Actually, I have had many sources of satisfaction over the last eight years. I'm proud to have played a leadership role in bringing greater transparency to the work of the board, in ensuring more accountability for district programs through periodic evaluations, in eliminating from our student disciplinary code some of the most subjective offenses, making that code fairer and less susceptible to discriminatory applications, particularly as to students of color, in protecting our undocumented immigrant students, in guaranteeing equality of access for our transgender students, in strengthening our prohibition on sexual harassment, in eliminating class rank, in preserving District 202's commitment to Park School, in standing up for our student journalists' freedom of the press, in broadening our student achievement equity goal to include elimination of the predictability of achievement based not just on race but on disability, family income, and English language proficiency, and in establishing the first-ever joint board goal for District 65 and 202 and annual joint superintendent reports on student achievement. Despite this last point, I have to admit that my biggest disappointment has been the failure to end the disjunction and blame casting that has characterized the relationship between the two school districts for as long as I can remember. I really believe, as I have often said, that we have a duty to provide the students of both districts, who are all our students, with a seamless K-12 educational experience. Maybe that's just not possible in our current configuration. Perhaps at some point down the line, I will re-enter the fray and launch a drive to consolidate the two school districts. I want to thank my colleagues on this board for their kind words, and more important, for their service to this community. And I want to thank Eric, Pete, Marcus, Mary, the other administrators, our outstanding faculty, and all the staff of ETS for their steadfast devotion to our students. To the incoming board members, congratulations and welcome to this important work. I'd like to offer a few words of unsolicited advice. These are things you won't learn in your formal board training. When it's a great day to be a Wild Kid, celebrate that. When it's not so great, be brave enough to acknowledge that and challenge yourself and your colleagues to work on making it greater. Be mindful of the fact that those you are here to serve, our students, parents, and taxpayers, are seldom in this room. But it is they whose esteem you should most prize. It's easy to lose sight of that. Put another way, nobody at this table is your boss. With that comes freedom, but also responsibility. As our legendary Evanston educator Barb Hiller taught me, when a program or initiative is being touted, always ask two questions. Is it working, and how do we know? Seek out all the information that you can from as wide a range of sources as possible and apply that in your work here. Drill deep into the information provided in your board packet. Listen to students and parents, teachers and taxpayers. As a longtime member of this board, our former mayor Elizabeth Tisdale taught me, you learn things at the kitchen table that you don't necessarily learn at the board table. And finally, always confront the difficult issues but never engage in personal attacks. In closing, I want to thank my family for putting up with my many Monday night absences and for putting up with the moods I returned from some of those Monday night absences with. Most of all, I want to thank the members of this community who have repeatedly invested their trust in me to do this important work for them. While I have attended a number of different schools in my life, my alma mater, the mother of my soul, will always be ETS. It has been a great privilege to serve this school that played such a big part in shaping the person that I am.
Thank you.
Well, it won't surprise you to know that I didn't prepare a speech. But I tell you, this position is about service. It's about service to the community and service to the kids. And at the end of the day, that's all it's about. You don't do it for personal recognition. You don't do it for the pay. And you don't do it for any personal reasons. So I'm extraordinarily grateful to the community for having had this opportunity for these 10 years. You know, you feel, I think that's true in a lot of things. You feel like, you know, you get more out of it than you put in. And I very much have that feeling as I've reflected these last couple of weeks over this term, or this 10-year term, that I really feel that way. I feel like, you know, I've become smarter, wiser, richer, more experienced for having done this. And it's been to my benefit. And I'm extraordinarily grateful to have had the opportunity. There's an awful lot of people to thank. Certainly, my wife and my family because, you know, a lot of time gets invested in this and a lot of grumbling and a lot of venting at home to people who don't tend to talk back to you about these matters. So I'm grateful for that. But Dr. Witherspoon and his staff for your leadership, your vision, and their execution, you know, your ability to stick to your plan and make progress. Thanks to past board members, people I served with in the past, including Rachel Hayman, Martha Burns, Mary Wilkerson, Jane Colliton, just to name a few. These are people that had a big impact on me. I learned a lot from them, serving with them on the board. And of course, all of you for your, you know, your support, your collegiality. We didn't always agree, but we got a lot done. So, you know, I think I have a perspective that's different than anybody else at the table in that the youngest of my children graduated just right about the time Dr. Witherspoon came to the school. So I know the school going back to 10 years before that really well from having my children there. And then I have this experience of watching it change over these last 10 years. And I am absolutely certain that ETS has never been a better school than it is now. Never. From work for all kids. Now, it doesn't mean we're there. And the challenge is still there to keep going, to stay the course, until we can say that this is an excellent school for every child. And we're not quite there yet, but we're sure on the right path. And so, you know, again, you know, I'm, if people judge, if other people judge that I had some small role in that progress, then I appreciate that. I'm thankful for that. But it's been a good ride. So thank you. Thank all of you.
Thank you.
All right. So we... We are at our next agenda item.
Probably that would be the time.
Is this? Okay. Yes, not on here.
Do we have to walk around the inside and take this? Get a pen?
No, I think they should because honestly, they don't get a pen.
You gotta earn a pen.
Do you take your thing, too? You take your nameplate and everything? Not yet.
We'll do, not yet.
Oh.
We still have a few more items. We're not, they're not done yet.
Oh, no, they're not done yet.
No.
Yeah, that comes later. But be sure they get a pen.
What's on the big box?
Get a pen.
Send this with them.
You get more than a pen, Mark.
Wait a minute. That's Jonathan's.
This is your box. Jonathan.
But that would be the right time to do the gift.
Yes. So we obviously don't do this very often. It's a little awkward.
We're on the fly.
But we are listening and learning from each other, as usual. Okay, we do have a couple of other agenda items that you need to be here for. So, Dr. Beavis, comments from the public?
Yes, we have three people signed up for comments from the public. Just as a reminder, comments from the public are limited to three minutes. I'll do a countdown. I'll let you know when, you know, there's about a minute left. And then my phone will go off. I'll fumble with my phone. It'll be a bit awkward. You'll finish your thoughts, and then we'll move on. Our first speaker tonight is B. Pierre.
Hello. This message is mostly for Dr. Campbell. I am Ms. Pierre. We spoke briefly via email about an incident that actually has been going on since the beginning of the 2019-2020 school year, which we all can assume is January. So I'm here because I tried to schedule a meeting with you. And it looks as though, at first, your admin was saying you wouldn't be available until the 9th. I work. I was off today. I'm off tomorrow. But I think there needs to be a more immediate response than when I would be next available, which is the 20th of May. And I also want to inculcate to you how serious this is. It got to the point where my son actually walked out of the classroom, and he sent me a message. He said, quote, "I just wasn't for it today." It's pretty bad. I also was told by the dean that she wanted to apologize to my son. And I'm not sure what logic that could be based on considering the gravity of the accusations, which I'm assuming have basically been confirmed by a good number of students along with my son. So for her to have the trepidation to think that she could still talk to my son after she's been reported is pretty astounding to me. And to go on so long doing it is also astounding. In the presence of other students, so the public should also be aware of that. And the last thing I want to say is there should be some type of institution for education on sexual harassment, even when it's at the hands of so-called instructors. Because I just am thankful that I've taught my son enough to know not to be misled, even by adults, who may or may not have, you know, ill intention, even if it's, you know, racism, sexual, whatever. I'm glad that he isn't weak-minded and fell into what looks like it was a trap to predate him into a very inappropriate exchange. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Jim Young.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to use this opportunity to thank Jonathan for your service over these years. I first met you, as you may recall, when you were serving on the board of District 65. And since I've met you, and I've grown to appreciate your dedication, the hard work, your preparation, and the concerns you have for all the kids throughout our community. And so I really, Jonathan, want to thank you for your service. I also do want to thank Bonnie and thank you and thank your kids for sharing, for their willingness to share you with the community. And to also say that, for that, the impact that you've had, what you brought to the table, the knowledge, the insight, is really to be commended. And I hope that future board members who will be replaced in this cycle and in future cycles will also look to you and to seek your advice and suggestions. Because we all recognize, and we're probably all not here tonight if we don't care about all the kids, if we don't care about education. But we also recognize it's a very complex and multi-dimensional issue and challenge that we face. There are no simple answers. And Jonathan, you've approached this in a way that I can only say thank you.
Our next speaker is Liliana Zecher.
Good evening. As you leave your seat at the District 202 board table, we want to thank you, Jonathan, for your service. You worked incredibly hard. You were earnest. You were hopeful. You were honest. You shared your convictions and your impeccable intellect with clarity. You were prepared. You were consistent. You were compassionate. You were humble. You were available. You listened well. We wrote to you frequently and long, and you wrote back always and longer. And when the going got tough, and it got plenty tough at times, you kept at it because, as you said in your own remarks, this was important work. I wanted to craft an original send-off message, but keep going back to the Theodore Roosevelt speech that has become popular recently. It seems to fit your 12-year service journey on the District 65 and 202 boards very well. Roosevelt said, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, who strives valiantly, who earns, who comes short again and again, but who does actually strive to do the deeds. The man who knows great enthusiasms, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly." Thank you for being in the arena for us for all those years, Jonathan.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the review of the board elections. I believe, Dr. Beavis, you're leading this as well?
Yes. The review of the election is in your packet, but I do want to read the resolution declaring the results of the election. "Be it resolved by the Board of Education, District 202, County of Cook, State of Illinois, that the returns from the regular election held on the second day of April 2019 in said high school district for the purpose of electing three members of the Board of Education, said district to serve full terms, be and the same are hereby canvassed, and the results thereof from the returns of said election are as follows. The tally for the permanent, or for the permanent minutes is attached in the packet. Therefore, the Board of Education finds and declares that the following are duly-elected members of the Board of Education, each to serve full terms: Monique Parsons, Elizabeth Rolowitz, and Stephanie Teterich. Passed by the Board, well, you don't pass it now, but passed by the Board of Education this day, April 2019."
All right.
So we'll need a motion.
Can we have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
All right, at this point, we are going to adjourn the retiring board, CNA DA, and then we will move on from there. We'll do the swearing-in after we adjourn the board.
So I will call for a motion with the roll call vote to retire the board to CNA DA. Could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. So at this point, I would like to ask Dr. Beavis to assume the role of President Pro Tem.
Yes, thank you. Right now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to administer the oath, and then we will do the organization of the incoming board. So if Monique, Elizabeth, and Stephanie could join me at the podium, we'll do the oath. Get within distance of the microphone.
There we go. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Elizabeth Rolowitz.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the Office of Member of Board of Education
Of the Office of Member of the Board of Education
of Evanston Township High School
Of Evanston Township High School
District 202
District 202
in accordance with
In accordance with
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
and the laws of the State of Illinois
and the laws of the State of Illinois
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
I further swear
I further swear
that I shall respect
that I shall respect
taxpayers' interests
taxpayers' interests
by serving as a faithful protector
by serving as a faithful protector
of the school district's assets
of the school district's assets
I shall encourage
I shall encourage
and respect the free expression
and respect the free expression
of opinion by my fellow board members
of opinion by my fellow board members
and others who seek a hearing
and others who seek a hearing
before the board
before the board
while respecting
while respecting
the privacy of students
the privacy of students
and employees
and employees
I shall recognize
I shall recognize
that a board member
that a board member
has no legal authority
has no legal authority
as an individual
as an individual
and that decisions can be made
and that decisions can be made
only by a majority vote
only by a majority vote
at a public board meeting
at a public board meeting
and
and
I shall abide by majority decisions
I shall abide by majority decisions
of the board
of the board
while retaining the right
while retaining the right
to see changes
to see changes
in such decisions
in such decisions
through ethical
through ethical
and constructive channels
and constructive channels
Congratulations.
I will.
Bye, Jonathan.
Bye, Jonathan.
Hello, welcome.
I'm still present.
We're on the good side of the table, just so you know. These are the schools, so it was Jonathan's, but do you have a login? Yeah, so you should be able to log in. Yeah, go ahead and try.
All right. So I am going to call the meeting back to order, and I am going to ask for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Montzel.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Rolowitz.
Here.
Teterich.
Here.
Savage Williams.
Here.
All right, now, I will take nominations for the Office of President, Vice President, and Secretary. Nominations need not be seconded. Each nomination will be voted on in order of their nomination. Once a candidate receives a majority of the votes of the Board, four votes, the election process is over. Now I'm going to call for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
I nominate Pat Savage-Williams for School Board President.
Are there any other nominations? I am now going to close nominations and call for a vote.
Yes.
Montzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes.
Now, our President will assume the chair and take over the meeting.
Thank you. So now, I would like to call for nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
I'm honored to nominate Monique Parsons as Vice President of the School Board for District 202.
Are there other nominations for Vice President? If none, the nominations are closed, and I will call for a vote.
LaDain.
Yes.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rol.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. I will now call for nominations for Secretary of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
Oh, sure. Nominate Pete Davis.
Are there other nominations for the position of Secretary?
He hopes so.
Somebody.
Thought it was a given, I'm sorry.
Nominations are closed. Can we have a vote, please?
LaDain.
Yes.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. I will now call for a motion to appoint Mary Rodino as the School Treasurer of the Board of Education for a one-year term with a compensation of $1,000. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Phoebe, do we need a second?
Do you need a second?
We don't need a second.
Second, if there needs to be one.
Can we have a roll call, please?
LaDain.
Yes.
Montzel. Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. So before we proceed, I prepared another statement. And this one is welcome to our new School Board members. Congratulations on being elected to the ETHS School Board, all three of you. There is no greater contribution than serving as a member of the leadership team that provides educational opportunities for students in our ETHS community. I anticipate that this will be a rewarding, yet challenging, experience for you. We have been blessed with a strong superintendent, administration, faculty, and staff. The ETHS administration and staff designed curriculum, instruction, and systems of support that raise the performance of students at every strata. Determining the specific strategies to achieve the goals is not the work of the Board, but we do assess the effectiveness of those strategies. Our role as a School Board is to set policy, to ask questions of the administration, to continually challenge them to provide student achievement at all levels. A few weeks ago, I heard President, I'm going to always call him President Barack Obama. Yes, I heard President Barack Obama address the newly-elected Democratic Congress Congressional Members. And here are a few points that he made. I started writing them down because I thought they were worth sharing with you. He said, "Retain your humanity. Don't lose yourself." And I'm going to add, "Remember our students. It's always about the students." Back to him, he said, "Question. Don't lose your soul. Hold on to the line that you will not cross." This Board will continue to focus on our goals. And I'm going to end by reading our first goal, even though I encourage you to review them all. ETHS will increase each student's academic and functional trajectory to realize college, career readiness, and independence. Recognizing that racism is the most devastating factor contributing to the diminished achievement of students, ETHS will strive to eliminate the predictability of academic achievement based on race. ETHS will also strive to eliminate the predictability of academic achievement based on family income, disabilities, and status as English-language learners. Again, welcome to this table.
Thank you.
All right, back to our agenda. So we are approving resolutions. So could I please, my computer is falling asleep, have a motion to approve, approve the resolution ratifying acts, contracts, policies, and bylaws.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
LaDain.
Yes.
Montzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. The next is a resolution designating signatory. We have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Montzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
LaDain.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Next is a resolution regarding check signatures.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
LaDain.
Yes.
Montzel. Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Next is a resolution establishing regular meeting dates and place.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
LaDain.
Yes.
Montzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Next is a resolution establishing dates to review closed session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Teterich.
Yes.
LaDain.
Yes.
Montzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. And finally, resolution ratifying approved depositories.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
LaDain.
Yes.
Montzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Okay, so now we're at item number 12, which is review of student election and the oath of office for student Board Representative. Dr. Beavis.
Sure, first, we're going to do the recognition of the retiring student Board member, and then what we will do is I'll read the resolution declaring the results, and then we will do the oath at the podium. So we'll start with thanking Phoebe for her service.
So.
Yes.
Well, so I get the privilege of starting this off. So I first want to say that ETHS is full of amazing students. And so it takes a lot to shine above a great group of students. But Phoebe has managed to do that in the short time that we've gotten to work with her. Obviously, she's an amazing student. She balances the work of her classes and her activities with coming here monthly and being prepared. And she's been a really excellent student rep because she's not only helped us understand what it is day-to-day to be a student here at ETHS, but she's really given us insight into what that experience is. And that's really powerful because we need that to do our work. It's been a while since we were in high school, and we aren't here every day. But you are, and you're our eyes and ears, and you've really done an amazing job of giving us much more than the tick-tock of what it is to be a student here, and really, really provided us with insight. And that's been very powerful and helpful to us as we make decisions. Phoebe is also an amazing advocate, certainly here at ETHS. She's been involved in many things, but even within our broader community. You know, Phoebe was one, was on a panel of a small number of people to interview the new police chief, really engaged in our community. She started a group, she loves the name of, I had to ask what it means, but she started NASA, which is North Shore Association of Student Activists. So she was a founding member from ETHS of bringing together high schools on the North Shore so that they could really put their efforts together and bring their voices together in even a stronger way. She's also been very involved in national and regional issues, including anti-gun violence marches and so forth, and really, not just going to a march, but really understanding the issues and taking the time to do, to do that advocacy in a deeper way. So we have all just been awed by you all year and really feel honored to be able to have served with you. We think your fellow students must think the same of you. They certainly should. And we just look forward to all that you're going to accomplish, and we know we're going to be reading about you and hearing about you for a long time because you are a really special, dedicated person who really has tremendous power and impact. And just keep it up because you're doing a great job, and the sky's the limit on what you're going to achieve. So thank you very much for working with us this year.
Others?
Sure. So I get the benefit of seeing our high school students in the community and often at the Y. So I get to see, I get to see Phoebe. And it was absolutely a privilege to serve on the hiring panel with Phoebe for the Chief of Police. And I think I, during the panel, I introduced a topic of equity as we were reviewing the interviewing questions, and Phoebe went right in and said, "This is what the question should be." In a room of community leaders, in a room of elected officials, city officials, and she had no, or you had, no fear in terms of finding your comfort in that room and speaking up. And that's the Phoebe I see when you move through the community, and I, and I get to watch you from afar, when you walk up to me, you know, outside of this, this building, and, you know, say your words to me, or talk to me, or engage me, or wish me happy birthday, just in the Phoebe way, and you are so confident and so self-assured about who you are. And, and I don't remember being that way, right? When I was in high school, I don't remember that. And, and for you to just be that comfortable in, in your skin and who you are, and to stand for what you stand for without hesitation. I wrote down, I think, Pat, something you said, "Hold the line." That, that you said President Obama said, "Hold on to the line you will never cross." And you're very, very certain about where your line is. And, and so I, I just appreciate that. But I, I will never forget just watching you just be a part of that very important process that just helped to set the tone of the future for the City of Evanston. I don't know if you realize how important it was to be a part of that hiring panel for this community, but your involvement will be long-lasting. You elect, or not elected, but you, you were a part of hiring the next police chief of City of Evanston, and that's powerful as a youngster and having a voice in that process. So I got to just witness your movement and, and your space, and, and I definitely appreciated that. So I'm excited about how you move on from here and about your future. And I just can imagine that you will continue to grow and continue to be comfortable and continue to break glass, right? Because that's, that's what I, I think you will do. So thank you for serving, and thank you for being just who you are inside this building and within the community. Much appreciated. Yes.
Well, although we've only been neighbors for, for a year, sitting next to each other, I've just been amazed at your courage to lift up the difficult issues and to lift up your voice and lead your peers in lifting up what is right on principle. I was really, I was really inspired by your involvement with linking up with the students from Parkland down in Florida, and because I do a lot of the work that you refer to outside of this district, the work against gun violence. I was so proud because I, last year I attended that, that event and that march at St. Sabina, led by Father Flager, and when the Parkland students were doing their tour around the country, I was so proud to be able to say to everyone that Evanston gets it. Evanston has its finger on the pulse, and we're not insular, and we want what's good for us, not only what's good for us, but what's good for, for young folks all across this nation. And I've just been so inspired, sitting next to you as you brought out, brought up these difficult issues. And I just feel like your impact on the school will continue to resonate, and I'm hopeful that other students that are still here will follow suit. Thank you so much.
So Phoebe, I get to close out. I just admit that your report has always been my, no offense, favorite part of the meeting. I'm sorry.
Maybe I'll get her as a consultant.
You can work with Dr. Wetherspoon. But I, I know that when you provide your report, that it's going to be enthusiastic, maybe a little entertaining, but also challenging and informative. So I, I could tell that you put so much thought and so much work into preparing those reports. You've truly been a liaison for all students, and I know that can't be easy. We have a lot of students here, and you've taken that on in a very responsible and serious and adult-like way. So that's been really obvious. You've represented student interest, and, and they're not all yours, but you've taken the time to figure that out and how to speak and represent your peers. So I appreciate that. You have truly been a voice on this Board, and it's, it's a real voice. And you ask questions as we've gone through some, some of the items, and you've prepared. You come You come ready, you've come prepared. And there were times when we didn't expect you to come, and you always came. So I don't know that you missed many meetings, so you've been very, very, very good. So I really will miss your presence on this board. I think that I, my peers and I both have been deeply appreciative of you. And I look forward to hearing about your future because you've gotten some really exciting things going and started, not only here, but in the Evanston community. And you've just really branched out. So I expect that to continue, and I know that we'll hear about you. I wish you the best, Phoebe. Thank you so, so much.
Okay. So, I've written a lot of speeches in the past year on a wide variety of different topics, from like gun violence to like climate change and all these different sorts of things. And I've cared about all of them, but I think that this speech is one of the most honest and one of the most meaningful speeches that I've recited. Because it's really true. Everything that I'm saying is really, really true. So there are so many different experiences that I've had, events that I've attended and helped plan, and people that I've met throughout this year that would not have been possible without my role on this board and also as a student representative to the school board. Specifically, the people that I've been able to connect with in this role at ETHS and far beyond ETHS have changed the way that I see the world, but also the way that I see myself as a leader. What I've learned on this board and outside of it, I will take with me to college and far, far beyond for years and years, and hopefully years to come. I want to thank every elected member of this board, Jonathan and Mark included, who have just been dissipated, but they're still here in my heart. I want to thank you for your support. I want to thank Dr. Campbell for his unwavering support and dedication, not only to me in this role, but also to every student who we've talked about and who we've considered in our bi-weekly meetings. And most importantly, well, almost most importantly, to Mr. Pond, who I've been with and who has been with me throughout the past four years in all things political and not-so-political. He was my FAS teacher. He's also the student union slash student senate sponsor, staff sponsor. He's amazing. He supports every single student who comes into his room, whether they're with student union, whether they're a student of his, or just a student at ETHS. He's one of the most supportive staff members I've ever met in my four years. Lastly, but most importantly, I need to thank every single student at ETHS that has been willing to allow me to represent them this year. I cannot express how proud I am to have served as your student representative. This experience has been so unforgettable, so I want to thank you and to thank all of the students. And I promise that you are in good hands with my political peer and friend, Echo Allen. So thank you so much for an incredible year and for many, many, many years to come. So, thank you.
Okay, Phoebe, you get to walk around.
You gotta do the horseshoe.
Thank you so much.
You did it perfectly, Phoebe.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna read the resolution declaring the results of the student board election, and then I will administer the oath shortly thereafter. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, District 202, County of Cook, State of Illinois, that the returns from the student election held April 26, 2019, and said high school district for the purpose of electing one student member and one student alternate member of the Board of Education said district to serve from April 29, 2019 to May 6, 2020 are as follows, and these are in order of votes received. Echo Allen, Jessica Rogers, Sophie Weglers. Therefore, the Board of Education finds and declares that the following are duly-elected student members with the offices as specified below of the Board of Education to serve from April 29, 2019 to May 11, 2020. Echo Allen is our student member to the Board of Education, and Jessica Rogers is our alternate member to the Board of Education. And I'm gonna ask for a vote on this, and then I will do the swearing-in.
Okay, do we need a motion? Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Monzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Teterich.
Yes.
LaDain.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes.
Raise your red hand, repeat after me. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Echo.
A student member of the Board of Education.
A student member of the Board of Education.
Of Evanston Township High School.
Of Evanston Township High School.
District 202.
District 202.
County of Cook, Illinois.
County of Cook, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Echo, welcome to our table. Welcome to the board table. It's gonna be really great. It's gonna be a great year for you. Again, it's gonna be exciting and challenging at the same time. So I can tell you that being the liaison for students is a big responsibility. I'm sure you know that. And you heard all the kind words that we said about Phoebe, but they were all truths. So I expect we'll be equally as impressed by you. So feel free to reach out to me or any of us at any point in time. Welcome. Okay. So, wow, we are at a closing, closing of the board. Polling of the board, that just means if anybody has any comments in closing that you'd like to share, feel free to do so at this time. You don't have to. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm not gonna ask for a poll.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.